City Council meeting for Monday, September 10th at 7:00. We're a few minutes late here because we just had our EDA meeting chaired by Councilmember Abrams. So, thank you for sharing a good meeting. And now, we will be starting the council meeting. How's everybody doing? Good?
Good.
Yeah, good. We had a good workshop. And I want to talk a little bit on the headline about it's that time of year, council members, where school is starting, right? And so, I noticed that we had a fire truck, a Maplewood fire truck, parked outside of an elementary school with a big banner, "Drive Slowly." School's starting. And I thought that was really great. I'm going to make a few comments and then turn it over to Director Nadeau. And then, the other thing is, I was talking with neighbors across the street going down County Road B. And one of the neighbors felt that people were, even with the arm out and the stop sign, that cars were going around the buses. And so, there's some fear there that when you have little ones, five, six-year-olds, they're not going to see them as they go around the bus. And that's kind of a scary situation. So, I definitely want to caution all of you out there driving around bus time, which is a long, it's like between 6:00 and 8:30. And then, again, for two hours in the afternoon, to watch out for kids. And Director Nadeau, I saw, what else? You did some other things, I saw. There's the speed sign, right? Was down here on County Road B.
Yes.
And I know you've had some other efforts.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is something that, as a public safety, we want to be very out front in making sure that people are aware that we've got kids going back to school in a very short time here. It'll be a little darker out when some of these kids are traveling back and forth to school. And so, as public safety, obviously, we've had our officers where we think children are crossing. We love that we've got our public safety partners, our fire department out there, helping to encourage safe driving as well. We have recently met with all of the bus companies. This is one of those statutes that if you go through a school bus arm, it does not actually have to be witnessed by a police officer. And we reminded them of the law. We gave them the forms they can fill out and instructions on, you know, making sure that if they can, they can get a license plate number and the description of the driver and some other things, because we want to be very proactive about this. Making sure that, you know, safety is in the minds of all of our motorists out there, particularly as it applies to school zones and kids crossing safely and that type of thing.
Okay, thank you. So, everybody, watch out. Thanks for our police department for being proactive. I think it's great you're out, meeting with the new bus drivers. You probably heard there's a shortage of bus drivers in Minnesota, so we probably have a lot of new drivers, right? Because they're trying to recruit whoever they can. And I think it actually pays pretty well. So, but, you know, that's a big vehicle to be full of children to be driving around. So, everybody be careful out there. Next, I hope you'll join me in --
May I just?
-- Councilmember Juneman.
Sorry, I just wanted to add one thing out the opening of school. I presume you probably noticed on the news that the governor was at Carver School in Maplewood for the first day of school. So, in addition to the principal and the teachers and everyone, he was there greeting kids. And what a great thing to happen in Maplewood, especially at Carver School. They've really worked hard to get there, so I thought we should acknowledge it.
Oh, sure. If there's anything like that, jump in. I think that's fantastic. And they made a little video, so if you're on Facebook or Twitter, they have it around. And there's the governor at a Maplewood school. So, what a great thing that is. All right, thank you. With that, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a roll call by our city clerk, Andrea Sint.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Abrams.
Here.
Councilmember Jean.
Here.
Councilmember Juneman.
Mayor Slawick.
Here, thank you. We will not do the mayor's address on protocol because we have no public hearings tonight. So, that brings us to Item D, Approval of Agenda. Is there a motion?
Approval of Agenda.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved by Jean and seconded by Abrams, Approval of Agenda. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Juneman.
On to council presentations. I have three items. The fall cleanup, our medicine drop-off box here at the City Hall campus, and announcement on ashtray education.
Ashtray or Ash Tree?
Ash Tree.
Okay. I thought you said Ash Tray. I thought, well, that's interesting.
That's a different topic.
Okay. Anybody else? I was going to do one on BRE visits. We had one of those today. And Councilmember Smith?
I'll do one on the candidate forum.
Candidate forum. Anything else? Okay, good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing ayes, all, the agenda is approved. Approval of minutes. First, we're going to do the August 27th, 2018 City Council Workshop Minutes. Is there a motion and second?
I'll move the workshop minutes.
Second. It's been moved by Abrams and seconded by Juneman, Approval of the August 27th, 2018 City Council Workshop Minutes. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing ayes, all, the workshop minutes are approved.
I'll move the August 27th City Council Meeting Minutes, second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilmember Smith and seconded by Juneman, the August 27th, 2018 City Council Meeting Minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing ayes, all, the August 27th City Council Meeting Minutes are passed. Next, we have appointments and presentations. First, we will have the council presentations, which we just talked about. We will start with Councilmember Juneman.
Thank you. These items are all found in your September newsletter, but I thought it would be worth featuring some of them so people don't miss them, which means you should be reading your Maplewood Living. But just in case you're not, first item is the fall cleanup. Remember, we don't have a city cleanup where you bring things to us in the fall. We have special scheduled pickup item, pick up of bulky items at reduced rates in the month of October, the 1st through the 26th. And all you need to do is contact Republic Services at 455-8634 to schedule a special pickup. And then, secondly, as long as we're talking about cleaning up and with school starting, sometimes people think, oh, yes, I should get those medications out of the house. So, remember that we have a medicine drop-off right here at the City Hall campus over at the night entrance to the Police Department. It's free, it's 24/7. Almost anything medical is accepted, except for sharps and needles and those kinds of things. That's obviously separate. But anything else in a bottle, a tube, an IV bag, whatever, those things are all accepted in that receptacle anytime you're driving by. Doesn't get any better. And finally, we've been having ashtray discussions, and we know it's on that road, unfortunately. So, the Nature Center, through our Nature Center programs, is having a special program on Tuesday, October 2nd, from 6:30 to 8:00. And it's called Ask the Forester, so you can kind of help decide if your tree is truly sick or not and what to do about it. And there'll be tips on how to identify it. So, I think that might be of help to some people.
Excellent.
Tuesday, October 2nd, at the Nature Center.
Ashtray.
Thank you.
As Councilmember Juneman mentioned, I just wanted to hold up the Maplewood Living Newsletter. And I know Joe, Joe's here. See if we can get the camera on the --
The Living.
There we go. And so, nice job, Joe. It's always good to see what's in the newsletter, and we know this goes into every home. And so, a lot of you, this is your main source of news about the city. Hope you'll take a look at that. Today, we had a BRE visit. City council members, I just want to share with you a little bit and then ask City Council Manager and Chief Nadeau if they would like to share as well. We always have that little company in Maplewood that makes Post-its. And we had a visit, yeah, we had a visit with them today, and primarily with Doug Stang. So, it was the chamber folks as well as us. And it's, it was really a good, wide-ranging discussion. You know, I always start out saying, how's your relationship with the city, which he said excellent. And then, we kind of get into some of the issues. And I thought some of the more sort of interesting things that he talked about was everything from deregulation. You know, deregulation actually benefits 3M because they can do more things. He talked a little bit about the permitting process, and in Minnesota, that's a difficult process. Talked about the tariffs, that they're not affecting them so much. Talked about the new CEO, who is Minnesota Living. I mean, he's in, was a Woodbury resident. We've had two European heads of 3M, and so, it's good to have now a local be the head of 3M. And really, I thought it was a really positive visit. You know, we always think of, we like to mention 3M as a Maplewood. We like to talk about 3M, but we don't often get to talk to 3M there because they are so big, besides people we might know in our neighborhoods. City Manager Coleman, what are your takeaways?
I always appreciate having a few moments to sit down with Representative from 3M because that doesn't happen very often. So, we really have to take advantage of that. In addition to the items that Mayor Slawick mentioned, the things that sort of resonated with me, we asked a question about workforce development and if they had problems hiring good people. And the answer was, the professional level positions, they don't have any trouble hiring for, but they do have trouble kind of doing the tradesman kinds of jobs, the plumbers and the mechanical people, and administrative assistants. We asked about where they, do they come to work trained and ready to go? And that was one place where they weren't trained and ready to go, was the administrative professional-type position. But I imagine that's kind of like walking into a foreign country when you start working at 3M because it's so big and lots of things go on. But I thought that was interesting. I also was pleased to hear that they have a good relationship with us and particularly our building department, because that's who they interface with the most. And they were quite pleased with our responsiveness and the ability to work through issues with them. They did talk about the new ramp and how they, they had made a promise at one point that they'd never build a ramp, and they had to build a ramp. But it was a really good conversation. I was a little bit disappointed that they didn't want the bridge.
Yeah.
That goes along with the Gold Line project. And they're still a little skittish about that, too. So, we have some work to do with getting their confidence up about how that's going to work for them and keep them safe, because that's their primary concern, is security. So, those were, I guess, my takeaways.
Now, they told us that 15,000 people now come onto the 3M campus every day. So, just their traffic patterns are difficult or challenging to manage, and then adding in, you know, the Gold Line can add in a different --
How's that going to interface?
-- different layer.
Yeah.
So, and the other thing, if you see somebody from 3M, you have to compliment them on what's different about the building. Has everybody seen? They wrapped the building. And what does it say? It says, "It's about believing and creativity."
Yes.
And it just looks fantastic. It brings that updated look to kind of an aging building. Director Nadeau, why don't you tell us your impressions?
Well, first of all, I was amazed that there's 15,000 people a day that's on that campus. And we've had a great working relationship in public safety, as they have with other city departments. But the one thing that was really impressive to me was their level of reinvestment in their own campus, whether it's new buildings that are going up, whether it's redesign of the campus to kind of accommodate that traffic flow of all the people that need to move around, or just really getting into some of these buildings, he said, that were built in the 50s and 60s, and doing major remodels. And obviously, they've got asbestos, and they've got all of these other things to have to deal with. But I was really encouraged by the level of redevelopment on their complex and their commitment to staying in Maplewood.
Thank you. So, thank you both for being there and for the Chamber for their leadership and --
And Mayor.
Councilmember Juneman.
You said there's a new CEO. Now, I'm waiting for the day when you come back and say, there's a new CEO, and her name is.
Well, that day probably is coming, I would think. And especially as they get more STEM and more people in the upper echelons.
Then we'll know they've made it.
Breaking the glass ceiling. So, thank you. And then, Councilmember Smith, the candidate forum?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to congratulate all the candidates who participated in the City Council and Mayor Roll Candidate Forum this week. I think it's such a huge service that the League of Women Voters does for the city to help get to know the folks that are running for office. You know, I believe strongly that elections matter, and the people that we choose to lead at the local level and at the state and federal levels are, you know, it's really critical that folks pay attention, get to know the folks they're voting for, and be informed. And so, I thought it was a great forum and a great opportunity to get to see people in a little bit different way. So, and I know it's a lot of work, so I really, you know, thank the candidates for participating, but really thank the League of Women Voters for the work they put in to make that happen.
You know, Councilmember Smith, is that being rerun?
Yes.
Does anybody know the schedule, what that might be?
Monday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings at 8:00 AM on Channel 16. That's what I was told, anyway.
And I believe it's also available for streaming.
Ah, yes. There's a link?
There's a link on our webpage, and it's through CTV.
Okay.
And you can watch that anytime on your computer.
Good comments, thank you. Next, we'll have the administrative presentations, council calendar update by our city manager, Melinda Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor Slawick. The purpose of the calendar update is to just remind the council of the things that are coming up on our next agendas. And also, it allows the time for the council to bring forth issues or concerns that they would like staff to do a little research on and report back, either through some kind of written report or through a workshop. So, with that, our next workshop is going to be dedicated to code enforcement. And we're going to have some ideas for you on a more proactive approach to code enforcement. We'll be presenting that before the council meeting on the 24th. On October 8th, you're going to get an update on the urban agricultural ordinance, if there's been many takers on some of our new initiatives or not, and look at tree program options, and also, an update on rental housing licensing. On October 25th, we have, we're going to have the Tobacco 21 Advocates, which will include kids from our schools that evening. And then, at a later date, we'll bring back, we'll probably have a public hearing, and we'll bring back the business community for that. So, stay tuned on the next step there. Rental licensing, as I mentioned, has been scheduled. The EDA responsibilities and possible program areas, we're looking at probably the first part of November for that, unless something else time freezes up, we'll add it. The tree program is scheduled. Review of building permit fees, we're going to handle that through a report, and that will be sent to you between now and no later than the next meeting on September 24th. We do have a good idea of what other communities are doing with their building permit fees, and we also have a recommendation on solar panel permits. Also, we've invited District 622 and 623 superintendents to council meetings, and those are scheduled, and they're coming up, I think, in the October city council meetings. We also had been asked to create a pedestrian safety plan, and that is being worked on with our Public Works Director Steve Love and his staff. And we have, we will have a report for you on trail trimming program, how we do that and how that gets scheduled, and, you know, the kinds of work we do every year on that for your edification. And then, we're going to look at, we're also going, I have a handout for you this evening on preparing a marketing plan for, a marketing plan for cost sharing, the July 4th. And I think at the council meeting in August, it was suggested that we tie that in with our business engagement breakfast. And we're going to do that, and we have a little synopsis for that, that I'll hand out for you this evening on that. We also have some upcoming community events for your information. We have the rec-run, the 5K, on September 29th, 9:00 to 11:30. On October 27th is the Halloween Bash at the Bruin Truck Farm from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. And December 7th, I hate to think about that already, but Santa's workshop is going to be at the MCC YMCA from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. So, with that, council, I'd be happy to take any questions or items of interest that you'd like us to do some research on.
You know, one that I'm interested, City Manager Coleman, is in crashes. You know, I've had to ask for --
Accidents?
Yeah, accidents, accidents. In two different areas. And one I've requested, which I think we're all interested in, is the number of accidents on the overpass, over 36 in English. I did get that today, and I wondered if you could forward that to the rest of the council.
I believe that that wasn't an FYI back a month ago or so, but I'll resend it because it keeps coming up, and I actually go that way a lot to get to my father's house, and it's bad.
It is bad.
The visibility there is really not very good.
So, I'd like to, you know, I don't know if this, if we can sort of put it on the list, I don't know if it necessarily has to be a presentation, but what are some options on what we can do there? In my understanding, it's a MINDOT-controlled bridge.
It is, yeah.
And so, we would have to talk to MINDOT. But people, you know, people just tell me, well, if you just took like a carving knife or whatever, a saw, and you sawed off half of the thing, then I could see. So, could you just do that?
[Laughter]
And, you know, we all think it's really simple, right? But we don't know maybe if the thing might fall down.
When it gets to MINDOT, it might not.
If you did that, right? And so...
Yeah. Well, I think that it is an important issue for community, because I do hear quite a bit about that. And I think Mr. Love responded to you with the, or Mr. Nadeau, I can't remember which, gave you the accident report, but Mr. Love gave you the contact information. And we can certainly reach out and see if we can have a conversation with them about that. The, you know, the one thing that I can say is, we have crash information. It's not that dramatic. But the complaints and the concerns that I've heard from people, it's an important issue.
We probably don't have cardiac arrest statistics from people driving at that intersection.
Well, it is. It's tough, yeah.
It's chronic, it's chronic.
Yeah.
And with bad weather coming, it's going to get worse. And the other one was just, and I don't know if we have our hot five highest accident rate areas, but on McKnight, which turns into Lakewood between Larpenter and Maryland, and people go at 45, but they actually go 50 or 55, the homeowners there are really struggling with how to even get out of their homes, because they can't, they're going so fast for them to take a left.
And there's a --
And even taking a right.
And there's also that curve as you get up onto the bridge.
Yeah.
McKnight and Maryland, is that what you said?
Yeah, it's between Maryland and Larpenter, so that whole stretch in there. So, and I'm in contact with the Public Works Director about these things, but we, I just want to know residents that were thinking about these things and that they're on our radar screens. The only other one I had, and then I'll call on Councilmember Juneman and Jean, was, is I would like, for two reasons, to have a report, and I'm not sure if it needs to be in a workshop, but I think it would be helpful for us to hear about this and be able to talk to somebody about the homeless population in Maplewood. We know they're there. We know they're on the trails. We know they're in the parks. We know they're sometimes by the car wash. We, there is a librarian at the Maplewood Library that they have once a week meetings with homeless people about their needs, you know? And that's, it should be at that county level, so it's not our responsibility. But I think it's, in a way, it is, right? That we need to know about it. And if people are showing up at the Maplewood Library homeless and need things, kind of, what is our role in that? And kind of, I guess, we want to be informed.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to have the council be informed on that.
Okay.
So, Councilmember Juneman?
Thank you. And now that you brought that up, I have had two people that live up in Legacy Village say that they've been approached by homeless people in the park up there. And I said, well, you kind of have to handle that for yourself, but I would just say, you know, I, I can't help you because you, I mean, if you're not walking your dog, for one thing, you're probably not having your money on you. But I, they feel bad, and they don't know what to do. And so, if we talk about it, then at least if somebody approaches us, we can say, well, this is what we know.
Maybe some strategies for residents?
Okay, thank you. Two things. Number one, I noticed that tonight on the WCCO TV News, they are going to be addressing vaping and all of the new devices. They showed a little picture on the promo of how they now have vaping devices that sort of masquerade as other things. So, parents are having a hard time negotiating that. So, as we're going to have this tobacco conversation, that is one of the big pieces, apparently, that's very disturbing to school officials and parents.
I think of jewels or something like that.
I don't know, but there's one that looks just like a little, almost like a little cellphone. Oh, it's hard. But the other one I wanted to bring up again was the, I think I asked, but I didn't really say what I thought. But now, I've got an example of someplace where they do this. I believe it's in White Bear Township. When a business leaves, the sign comes off the building. So, I think we need to look at our sign ordinance and see what that's like, or at least the large display signs at the street. Because almost, especially up by the mall, it would be very disconcerting to be someone coming off 694, to go to something that isn't there when you get there. So, I think it's kind of bad advertising, shall we say. So, I think we should just look into it with the possibilities. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Councilmember Smith?
Mayor, I just wanted to let you know, I just saw in the newspaper, there, our good old friend, Farmer Chief Schnell, is likely to be hot on the case on the fact that there is a goat wandering the streets of Inver Grove Heights right now.
That's a biggie.
I just wanted to let you know that the Inver Grove Heights Police Department issued a statement today saying that they know that there is a goat on the lam.
Oh, very busy over there in Inver Grove Heights, isn't it? Thanks for that update.
Yeah, I'll keep you posted.
Yeah. Goats wandering around Maplewood is okay? No, no, as long as they're fenced in. Yeah. All right, on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and unusually are approved in one motion of the council. Unless anybody has anything on there, we can take a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda items G1 through 6.
Second?
Oh, sorry.
Is there any discussion?
I have the highlights.
Okay.
I apologize. I didn't see your finger in the air.
So, number two is that 400, the city manager can talk about, the 400 women mayors were invited to the White House for a one-day conference. And really, what it's about is meeting with federal officials. Now, do we have something at stake federally right now?
Yeah.
We have two big things at stake, and they are our BRT lines in transportation. I know, Councilmember Smith, you're involved, you're our member on the Gold Line. I'm the chair of the PAC for the Rush Line. And having stronger relationships with federal officials could help that, because we know in this east metro area, you know, we're struggling, you know, when the Bottono and the Southwest hog all that money and sit on it, we want them to give us a little. And maybe by having some federal leverage, we could do that. That wasn't really a very grammatically correct sense, but I think you know what I meant. Councilmember Abrams?
I also wanted to say what an honor it is that our mayor is being invited to the White House to meet with other mayors, and what a great opportunity to share and get some feedback. And you're right, these transportation issues are huge, and the fact that you get to go to Washington DC on our behalf, I just think that it's a wonderful opportunity.
Thank you.
So, I wanted to highlight that because I think that it's all good for citizens of Maplewood when we're looking at trying to get transportation here. So, I'm looking forward to your report when you get back on what it was like.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you very much for doing that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing ayes, all, the motion passes on the consent agenda. And Andrea, did you get who made the motions? So, it was the Councilmember Juneman made the motion, and Councilmember Jean did the second.
And Mayor, I'm sorry, I neglected. We probably should make an announcement on number six.
Number six. Number six, so, City Manager Coleman, we have a change of our regular schedule. If you'd like to talk about that?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Slawick, members of the city council. Due to some scheduling issues with a couple of our council members, we are rescheduling our normal October 22nd council meeting and workshop to October 25th. So, instead of Monday that week, it'll be on Thursday, same time, workshop at 5:30, council meeting at 7:00.
Will that be posted on the website?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Good point. Let's see, we have I, unfinished business. We have J. This is our last items of business, and it's only quartered eight. And also, if you were on the consent agenda, don't feel like you have to stay, but thank you for coming. The resolution providing approval of the 2019 preliminary property tax levy and setting the 2019 budget public hearing date and time is our new business item, number one, and our second is an ordinance repealing the Police Civil Service Commission, which takes five votes. So, with that, City Manager Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor Slawick, members of the city council. Tonight is a culmination of the work that staff and council has been doing to prepare for the 2019 preliminary tax levy and setting the 2019 budget, public hearing date and time. The proposed tax levy that is being recommended by the staff is 3% increase over the 2018 final tax levy, which results in an estimated 3.7 city property tax increase on a median value home in Maplewood. We have, the last couple of meetings talked about options. I understand that at the August 28th meeting, there was some discussion about what would it look like to reduce the levy. I personally would recommend that we not go tonight at a lower amount than 3% because this is the preliminary levy. We can reduce the preliminary levy in December when we adopt the budget, but we can't go up. One of my concerns about going under 3% is that then we're not putting the same amount of money we'd hoped to put into our reserve funds, and if we start going down that slope of not keeping that up, it gets harder and harder every year to go back to do that. And one of the things that concerns me is that it lessens our opportunity to react to emergency situations or unplanned things. I don't know if any of you read the paper on Sunday, but there was a big article about all the big boxes that are challenging their taxes, and they're winning pretty big awards, and we have a few of those big boxes. And so, I know Ellie put a little bit of money in the budget for that, but that's one of my concerns about not keeping the reserve fund up at that higher level and in keeping with their financial policy. But other than that, that's my recommendation. You are the folks that represent the residents of Maplewood, and it is up to you to decide what that is, but I will let Ellie go through this again. I think this will be the third time she's presented some options for you to consider. So, I will let Ellie work through that with you, and then we can obviously answer any questions that you might have about the information that's being presented tonight. I'm hoping that this is all sort of coming together very clearly for you and that you'll have a pretty easy time navigating this information and making a good recommendation for the community for the 2019 levy. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to say to the council, as you know, this is an annual process for us. It really comes up fast, but I'm sure we're going to have a thoughtful discussion, and you know, it's one of our biggest responsibilities is setting the levy. Ms. Paul Seth?
Thank you, Mayor and council. We do have a PowerPoint for this, and I will try not to belabor because we have discussed this several times, but I want to go through the highlights of what we'll be doing tonight. The council is being asked to consider the preliminary property tax levy. So, you won't be adopting the budget. You won't even be setting the final levy, just setting the preliminary levy, which is the maximum that you are willing to adopt for taxes payable in 2019. So, as City Manager mentioned, you may reduce it in December when you adopt the final levy, but you may not increase it. Again, she mentioned our recommendation is for a 3% increase. We also have other options at your request. We will walk through those reasons for our recommendation, but whatever the council decides is best for the community is what we will do, and that's our job to make that work, and we will do that. So, to start off with, you have seen this slide before. The 3% levy increase brings in additional property tax dollars of $644,000. The big highlight from this slide is you can see that we are no longer levying for the ambulance fund, so that was a really big help this year in putting together this levy at a reasonable increase. I won't go through too much of this, but the highlights, again, a big increase in workers' compensation premiums, a need for some IT equipment and services to new police officers. We are, the capital equipment line of $105,000, we are now paying as we go for park equipment as opposed to borrowing for it. So, again, working in some of those debt reduction strategies, no matter how minor they are, and augmenting our fund balance. We've been working on that over the last few years. It was really cut to the bone at one point, and we were trying to work on getting that back up for adequate cash flow, and we'll discuss that. That is the components of the $644,000. So, coming back to the fund balance, cash flow needs. As you will notice in the chart, projected for 2019, this scenario includes the $200,000 addition to fund balance. So, you will see that by doing that, it brings the city just above the minimum requirements. The minimum target in the red is 41.67% of expenditures. That number isn't magic. It's five months' worth of expenditures. So, that will bring, as expenditures rise, so does the need for fund balance. It's really a cat and mouse game, and it can be difficult. So, one of the reasons why we're really working hard to build that fund balance up so that we're not constantly chasing that number. We don't know yet how, we have an estimate for 2018, but we don't really know yet how that is going to turn out. Again, we're hoping for a really nice fall so that we can be issuing building permits late into the fall to make up for the late spring start that we had. So, again, our need for fund balance is in between 41.67% and 50%. All three scenarios that we're presenting tonight are shown. Scenario 1 and 2, 2.5% and 2.75% increases to the levy do not quite meet those requirements for fund balance. So, that is part of our reasoning for recommending the three. The property tax levy history, I really only want to point out here, you've seen this many times before. This is a seven-year illustration with the 3% in 2019, if that is what adopted. The average annual increase is 2.9%. So, that's considered pretty reasonable if you watch, and it'll be published soon in the Star Tribune after levies are adopted. They typically publish all metropolitan cities levy increases, and Maplewood is typically, you know, at the bottom, right around that 3% range. We see a lot of, you know, higher single digits and a lot of double-digit increases. So, we do think 3% is reasonable relative to other cities. This chart just illustrates how we stack up against our peer cities with our levy trend. It's illustrated a little bit more detailed in packet page 57 in the staff report where the cities are actually listed. On the slide, I am just representing them as average peer cities rather than calling them out. Every city has their own individual story and individual needs, so just to shorten it up here, we have a half a dozen or so cities that fall kind of right in our population range. And what I have found from working with property tax data and budgets for so many years is that a lot of city expenditures, particularly police expenditures, which is, and public safety expenditures, which is the primary part of the budget, over 50%, a lot of those types of expenditures are very population sensitive. So, we tend to, you tend to really find when you're looking at cities of, when you're looking at the population of cities, you find that there tends to be a break along certain population lines. And so, that is basically what we have done, is included cities approximately 20% above and below our population range because that seems to be the best comparison. The takeaway from this slide is that Maplewood is slightly above the average population of this group, but you can see each year from 2012, relative to the other cities, Maplewood's levy is a lesser amount of the average. So, we're continuing to be relative to the other cities, or continuing to bring our levy down as theirs either stay the same or go up. So, in 2016, we were down to about average of these cities. We started out a little bit higher in 2012. We know anecdotally through surveys that we have done and through, you know, looking through other sources of information, that these cities, most of them, had higher levy increases in the years 2017 through 2019. The league does not have that information put together into a report yet, so I didn't include it, but we do know by doing our own monitoring every year and by looking at other sources that our levy increases are lower than almost everyone on this chart. So, what that means is that we're actually probably going to see those lines crisscross, and Maplewood by 2019 may even be slightly below the average for the amount, the dollar amount of the levy. I won't spend too much time on this chart. You've seen it before. Again, this particular chart measures six years rather than seven, with the average increase then being 3% per year. We can see, you know, appreciable gain in tax capacity, 4.9% in fiscal disparities as well, with the tax rate going down each year. So, and in looking at the city, Maplewood's tax capacity rate relative to other cities, again, the league puts this information out. They do not have the 2017 information available. As I mentioned before, the Department of Revenue is having trouble with their database. But as you can see, again, the city's tax capacity is continually decreasing. Relative to the others, Maplewood has been above the average in the metro area for tax capacity rate. We're more in line with what the average Minnesota city tax rate is. So, this can be very complex. There's a number of factors that go into it. Probably the biggest factor is going to be the structure of the tax base in the community and the wealth in the community that makes up the tax base. Without going too deeply into it, that chart basically just illustrates that, again, that Maplewood's levy or tax rate is trending down. The others, maybe not so much. But again, this is something we'll be following and bringing back to you every year. The property tax impact of the proposed 3% levy, we did discuss this already. It's a $33 per year increase or 3.7% on the median value home. And the reason for that, again, is the large increase in residential value, about 6.2% caused a shift onto the homeowners, and we may see more of those shifts. From the article that I read, that's what I expect that Manager Coleman mentioned, is that we may see more of those shifts in the future. I will tell you that about half of the increase, the $33 increase, is due to factors that are outside of your control, due to those shift factors and those legislative factors. Only about half of it is really due to the spending increase. I did want to point this out because I love this stuff. I've been doing property taxes for 37 years, and so I do, I was a county auditor for 21 years, so it really, really excites me. But it is a 2010 to 2019 chart of a trend of tax impacts. So, rather than talking about levies or rates or any of those other factors, it's the actual impact. What did the, what did the average taxpayer see? Because the levy increase doesn't always equate to what the impact is, as you well know, this year being one of them. So, this really illustrates how badly some of these peaks and valleys and these spikes can happen over the years. You see the large one in 2015 where there was a 16.4% increase in taxes for the median valued home. That was the year, and there was nothing that the city could do about it. That was the year where in December, a very, very, very large taxpayer in the city won a property tax appeal, and the value was decreased significantly. It happened in the end of December after the truth in taxation was already done with and taxpayers were notified of a lower rate. I mean, these things happen. I've seen them happen before, and it took a couple of years to pull out of that. So, that really had a large impact on the property taxes that the city really had no control over. So, I do know this is really a source of frustration for property tax owners, property taxpayers, and I will tell you that they do tend to remember the spikes and not the valleys so much. When they call me and we talk about it, you know, they talk about how their taxes have gone up and up and up every year, and I tell them, you know, "Well, let's look into it. I'll look into it for you," because sometimes they forget about, they had an addition to their home, and there was, you know, an additional value added to their home, and therefore the taxes went up. But most of the time, it's that they're really forgetting that there were some valleys in there too, and that there were years in which their taxes were decreased. And when I show them this long-term perspective, and I usually only do five years, they're usually not too upset by the time we get done talking. And here is why, and this kind of illustrates what you can do with data. The chart on the right, where it says payable year and percent change, means how much of an increase or decrease the property tax impact had. So, the average taxpayer saw that much in their property tax bill going up or down. So, averaging that out, using the last two years, meaning 2019 and 18, we'd be looking at over two years, that averages to 3% per year. You can pick whatever timeframe you want. You can see how data can be distorted, but the last three years, 3.17. But the point is, over the last 10 years, the average per year is 3.77%. So, when taxpayers see it that way, they tend to accept it a little more. Again, we did, we do this every year. We do a little bit of a survey to find out what others are doing, not that we're trying to keep up with the Joneses or follow what everybody else is doing, but it just gives us some perspective and some context as to what's going on out there. So, just a survey of cities who answered, some in our peer group, some neighbors. Not everyone answered it. Not everyone had the time to do that. But you can see a number of cities, you know, considerably higher, and I won't go into these. Each city has their own story and their own reasons for this, but it does kind of illustrate that we're fairly reasonable at our 3%. And so, as we move into the other options, well, this is where we'll discuss how we came up with our recommendation. So, we looked at a 2.5% increase. That would allow, that would still allow us to add $100,000 to fund balance as opposed to $200,000, and it would still allow us to do those initiatives, hiring those cops and getting those housing inspectors working. The average homeowner or median valued homeowner would see then an increase of $28 as opposed to $33, so it's a $5 difference, bringing that to 3.1% instead of 3.7. So, that's $5 per year. And the 2.75% option would allow an addition to fund balance of $150 and would be, and this is actually rounded up, it should be $2.5 increase, so from 28 to 31, it's really $30.50, but 3.4% or in that area. And so, that was one of the things that we thought about when we looked at the city's needs and the need to keep, you know, to keep, to try to avoid those spikes to the extent that the city has control over it, to try to keep that levy as stable as possible. We know that we're already going into next year needing to fit in two new police officers on a full-time basis rather than just half the year. So, we know we've got $100,000 there. We know we have communication salaries that we need to move to the general fund. We know we want to implement a new road levy. So, all of those things together really helps us build, the 3% helps us build capacity, and we feel like the taxpayers are getting a little bit better value for their money as opposed to splitting hairs over $5 a year or $2.5. So, in the end, our recommendation was the $33 or the 3%, 3.7%. Again, we are here to do the council's wish, and that's what we will do, but that was our recommendation. And if there are any questions, I would certainly be happy to answer them this time.
Counsel, we have time for a discussion and looking for some, I see no lights on. Is there a big, oh, we got one on. Councilmember Smith, are you talking about the goat more?
No, I'm finished with the goat. Thank you. I think the way I look at this is, it's the preliminary levy, so we have some time to consider it. I think the 3% to me makes sense. I mean, really, $5 a year is 50 cents a month. It's about a penny a day, penny and a half a day. I think that to guarantee our ability to hire two more cops, get our financial house even further into order, it seems worth it to me. You know, I'm not unaware of the fact that there's other taxing authorities that impact property taxes that are outside of our control, but I feel like if the range is $5 a year for an average homeowner, that seems, the juice is worth the squeeze, I think, from my perspective, and we still have some time to continue to talk through that, but that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Councilmember Zhang?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, in terms of the preliminary, setting the preliminary tax levy, I would be in favor of 3% too. And I think the key word you hit on it was, you know, the residents getting the value for their money. I know there are a list of things that we really want to look at, and I think giving us that room and some time to talk about it in more detail once we get closer to voting for it. So, I'd be in favor of the 3% too.
Thank you. Councilmember Juneman?
Thank you. Myself as well. The 3% gives us the things we have said over the long haul that we want. Our own financial policy says that we want to keep the fund balance healthy. We don't want to roll it back. don't want to roll it back, um, it's the slippery slope. I also think that $5 is more than absorbable and, once again, I will say, we all sit, who sit here, all pay taxes in Maplewood and all paid the same taxes that everybody else does from the other taxing authorities and we have to just do it, it's the way it is. Unlike the rest of you however, I've lived on a, shall we say, restricted income for quite some time now, isn't only the hair that's gray. Um, and it's doable, but you have to, you do have to say that first things come first. And that taxes are among the first things you pay because that's how you stay in your house. So if it means you're not doing some other things, oh well, I'm kind of used to it now. Um, and I always tell people when they ask about this or say, well, taxes are so high, I always ask them to go down their tax statement and make note of which one is, has the largest lump. I do believe it's the layer right above us referred to as the County of Ramsey, who coincidentally are the same people that set the valuations on our properties, talk about a trap. Um, but that's where people belong if they want to go to a tax hearing, if you ask me. I actually defy the county to prove that they give the same bang for their buck that we do. It just doesn't happen. So I'm very much in, because of what we've said we want. And I'm not, I don't think anybody here wants to give on the two police officers, we want to go with rental licensing. You know, we can't say we want things and then not be willing to fund them.
Thank you, Councilmember Abrams.
Thank you, Mayor. I have really struggled with this, I really have. Uh, it's something that I have been hearing about and I was out on Saturday going around the neighborhoods and, and I heard about it again, about keeping our taxes down. And, uh, you know, I really appreciate the staff effort to give us proposals at 2.5, 2.75, and 3, that all include the two police officers, because I am in favor of two additional police officers. I'm also in favor of, uh, the rental housing inspectors that, uh, we really need in our city. My concern is that there are people out there that, uh, are expressing to me the difficulty that they envision happening. And I've certainly talked to them about the, you know, the, the lion's share of their taxes is going to Ramsey County. We've also got the school district, we've got the watershed, uh, and there are other taxing authorities that come out on our property taxes as well. And so we are just one little piece of the pie. Uh, but when you throw in a year that we have where we're looking at such great uncertainty with, uh, personal taxes, and I understand that they're very different things, but they come out of our residents' checkbooks. And so I am not inclined to go with the 3% because we can still, I think, accomplish what we need to. Uh, I would be more in favor of setting the max at 2.75. Uh, and so I, I'm, I'm listening to what residents are telling me and they're very concerned about the, how this is going to impact their families. Uh, they're concerned about, um, how they're going to pay for all of this. And it's not just one thing, to us it may sound, people are, you know, talking about $5 and, and like it doesn't mean anything, but, uh, when you add all of that up in, uh, along with the other taxing authorities that are going to be included on those property tax statements and the unknowns that we're facing in personal taxes, uh, you know, I just, I'm going to take a stand and, and go with what I'm hearing from residents that I'm, I want it to be under 3% and I want to see that we can do that and B, we, I still am very concerned that we provide excellent service and quality of service, uh, and I think that we do that and I think that we can do that at 2.75. So I'm leaning towards less as our maximum and really looking at what we can do because I certainly am hearing about it when I'm out there, so.
So the council has weighed in, now I have a couple of questions for you, right? Obviously, this is not the next vote, which requires five, but as long as we have a majority of the council, we can pass this. So, right now we have three threes and a 2.75. Um, you know, Ms. Paul Sess, since your passion is property taxes, I don't know if you can speculate at all on Ramsey County, but it just seems like this wild, the valuations go up and, uh, you know, how they're, they're just changing things around all the time, so we basically are paying more on the whole, but any thoughts on their rationale or did you happen to watch it or see their meeting?
Yes, I did. What I can tell you, Mayor Slawick, is that, um, the county has already settled on a 4.3% increase. Uh, the school district, I am not sure yet, I have not heard, um, but considering the way that the taxes are, are, are split up or allocated, Ramsey County being, getting the largest share, Maplewood getting about 32%, I think it is, um, of the total tax bill, um, and the school getting the balance, um, and the special districts getting a small amount actually. Um, I would expect that if the school held the line with 3% or 3.5% that we would still be seeing an overall tax increase of less than 4.
Okay, thank you. And then if we, as the three council members have said 3, does that mean up to 3.5, does that mean 3.0, does, is there, your interpretation would be the 3 that's described in this?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that the 3% would be a $644,000 increase over last year, which would be a tax levy of $22,109,600. And again, that is the maximum levy, um, it can be reduced.
I'm going to ask the city manager for clarification.
Um, I think, Mayor, the question that you're asking, I don't have the page in front of me, but I think what the mayor's talking about is the tax impact to the different types of housing, value housing. So our 3% levy could result in a 3.7% increase for a particular homeowner because of the value of their home.
Yes. And that, well, and also just that we, sometimes a 3 is anything below 3.5 and sometimes a 4 is anything between 3.5 and 4, but I didn't know.
No, we're, we're sticking with 3, yes.
Okay, so people need to understand that.
And for everyone else too, I think it, you, it's really a complex system and part of the problem is that Ramsey County decides where the market changes are going to be. So one year it's business and commercial, and next year it's industrial, and sometimes it hits the lower income houses, like this year, that's getting hit a little bit harder, or it's the higher income houses, and we don't know until the very, you know, we knew it about three weeks ago. And so that makes it very difficult for us to plan, but we, we really have no control over that. And that, that's very frustrating, I can see where it'd be frustrating for you as well, trying to make policy, uh, on last-minute information like that.
So what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about my philosophy on taxes and then go ahead and take the vote. Um, you know, taxes are what pays for our city services. Um, usually start out with, if you like the roads you drive on, but that's a tough one in Maplewood, but a lot of you with those new roads like them and we are working, I mean, this, this really, we are working on the roads quite hard and to make sure that everybody, um, is getting their roads serviced. If you like, um, your police being there, if you like your, if you're going to, you know, you've had a stroke or a heart attack and I go around, they want to make sure that the emergency medical services are there. If your house is on fire, and we have a fire not too far from here, um, you want to make sure the firemen, or fire people are there. Um, the city provides these services, you know, our services, as they say, are really close to the people. And taxes are part of a democracy and it's part of what we all pay in and then we all get something out of it. We just don't know when our time is, right, that we might have to draw on it more. Um, I've also been around the neighborhoods and I have heard, um, a lot, I have heard several concerns about taxes and it's interesting because in South Maplewood, where properties might be worth more, they'll say, "Oh, my taxes are so high" and, you know what, they are high. And even, but then we'll go into other areas and they'll say, "My property taxes are so high" and for that area, they're high too. And it's all relative to Councilman and Councilmember Juneman's point to what your income is, right? And so I just hope, um, residents understand that we think about this, that we're having a thoughtful discussion and that we have to balance the needs of the residents with the, with protecting you, uh, with protecting, you know, helping the streets, with providing the services that you need, um, and also all of us are, are doing it and balancing it with our pocketbooks as well. And so I am also going to weigh in at 3. Uh, and with that, does somebody have a recommended motion prepared? Councilmember Juneman, Smith, Zhang?
Uh, I move we adopt a resolution setting a preliminary tax levy for taxes payable in 2019 of $22,109,600,000, which is 3% and setting the 2019 budget hearing for December 10th, 2018 at 7:00 PM.
Second, sorry. It's been moved by Councilmember Smith and seconded by Councilmember Juneman, a motion to adopt the resolution setting a preliminary tax levy for taxes payable in 2019 of 22, 109,600,000 and setting the 29 budget hearing for December 10th, 2018 at 7 o'clock PM. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Abrams.
One other point that I wanted to throw in there is that when looking at, you know, you're talking about the median home at three point, the effect would be 3.7%. I'm looking at the most modest home that we have, the impact is actually 6%. And when you add the county and you add the school district, uh, we look at a different number and so I, that's one of the things that, that I'm focusing on, so anyway.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make that point.
Any other points? And it is, I mean, it affects all of our, our, um, folks differently and of course, properties are different and incomes are different and that's why it's always a, kind of a jumbled system as well as with all these different jurisdictions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Hearing four ayes and one nay, the motion and the preliminary property tax levy is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will go on to our last item of business, which is the ordinance repealing the Police Civil Service Commission, which takes five votes. City Manager Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor Slawick, members of the city council. Um, we are asking you to consider a ordinance tonight that would repeal the Civil Service Commission. Um, and a motion is required and as the mayor indicated, it does require five votes. In way of background, um, city staff, including Chief Nadeau, Ms. Ramo and Mike Funk, met with our three members of the Civil Service Commission members for the purpose of discussing, uh, the recruiting challenges we've had regarding the timeliness of the hiring process. And I believe Councilmember Juneman had a discussion with some of staff on this as well. Um, in many cases, it can take us an additional four to eight weeks to hire a police officer and that's compared to hiring other city positions. And this really poses a real risk of losing our top candidates and we came very close to doing that here just recently, uh, which was the reason we kind of put this in full speed ahead because we felt like we were losing some good candidates because of the timeframe it takes to run through the commission. Um, so they met and all of the three commissioners agreed that this process was not in the city's best interest, um, and does not position us well for recruiting the best talent. So that was a, a great meeting and a great outcome. As such, they support dissolving the civil service, our Police Civil Service Commission. Uh, one of the things that was brought up as a concern was that there somehow be involvement of the public, uh, and that that would remain in the hiring process. And in fact, uh, Mr. Funk did change the language in our city's personnel policy to memorialize the fact that we would bring in, uh, members or residents of the community to help in the hiring process. Uh, while the civil services wants an important way to screen potential employees and ensure fair treatment, professional hire, hiring practices and statutory hiring requirements, now labor, um, contracts, I'm sorry, read that a little wrong, but now we have other ways to do this. And one is that we have labor contracts in place and we have professional hiring practices and actually new state law that dictates how we hire police officers. So, uh, we really, um, do not need their help as we once did when it was first commissioned. So according to state law, this action requires all five members of the city council to vote for the ordinance. We would also recommend that we, um, at a future meeting, recognize Lisa Liddell, Deborah Burkholz and Jim Meehan for their years of service, um, and thank them, uh, for their work and the great service that they provided for our community. So we are asking you to adopt the ordinance on page 80, pack, page 80 of 80, or not, page number of 80, uh, which will in effect, uh, repeal the Civil Service Commission. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, uh, Chief Nadeau can also answer as well.
Thank you, good report. I know Councilmember Juneman, you've been on the commission, so I think we're eager to, uh, hear your viewpoint on this. I think that is, of course, we're, it's important we keep up on current hiring practices. Councilmember Juneman.
Certainly, eight years ago, I would never even envisioned the day when I would be the one that's in favor of this. That was a very important part of my, um, services community in my mind and part of it, I grew up with it, my father was also on the Civil Service Commission. And in the early days, it was very important because as the city manager has said, we didn't have the same hiring practices, there weren't, wasn't the same statutory support for those practices. Um, and you don't want just anybody walking in off the street and becoming a peace officer, so it was very, very important. And so, but I have heard from, even back when, uh, Chief Schnell was still here and certainly since Chief Nadeau has been here, it's become a stumbling block to hiring the best people. And so now it's having the opposite effect of what we needed it for initially. So, um, not wanting to be part of that, we certainly want to get the best that we can. And, um, the, their own, um, educational requirements have also been upped. That was one of the things we were doing mainly in the 90s when I was there, is that at that time, there wasn't a stricter educational requirement to become a police officer and now there is. So, some of their most important functions have basically been, um, taken into law and then our own hiring practices, uh, are certainly a lot stricter than they used to be. So much as it theoretically would pain me to do this, I think it's the wisest move we can make. And I really thank, um, Mr. Funk and Terry and the city manager for meeting with our current commissioners because I, that was an important piece of input and it would be difficult to be one of those people and all of a sudden, well, you're done now, we don't need you anymore. But I think they also know that their service has been very important in the past and they understand why this has to be done. So I, you know, I, I think we have no choice. I, like I said, it's, it has served its purpose for a long time, but now that it's getting in the way, we need to take it away and let the chief and our HR department go about hiring the best people we can find for these jobs.
Good, good discussion. I just want to clarify for the public that we have very few things that require five votes. And, uh, there are laws about us talking about votes before we vote and so when we go into a night like tonight, I do not know what the outcome is, we have not, uh, visited with each other, um, about that and so it's important, we're all listening carefully to the discussion.
And this is in statute, so that's why it takes five votes for us to erase it, so to speak, because this is written in statute when you are a civil service city, it takes everyone to take it out of that category.
And, and yes, and part of it is us is trusting the staff and then we also, it's about, uh, having pure trust, you know, Councilman, Councilmember Juneman has been the expert, uh, council member on this and so it's important we listen, at least for me, I'm listening carefully to her opinion. Councilmember Abrams.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I actually did some research on Police Civil Service Commissions for my day job, uh, in terms of recommending and, and advising my clients and I, when I did this research about a year ago, I likened Police Civil Service Commissions to buggy whips. Uh, I think that, uh, if I remember right, and I didn't go back and look at any of this, but Police Civil Service Commissions, the statute enacting them actually, I think, came from the 1940s. I think that there are maybe less than a half a dozen, I think it's.
Two years ago, I think there were nine left.
Yeah, it's less than that now, I think it was either five or six that are actually left, yes. Uh, because they are very much like buggy whips. Back when the Police Civil Service Commission statute was created, we didn't have, uh, public sector, uh, unions, contracts, we didn't have any of that, we didn't have the Americans with Disabilities Act, we didn't have the Human Rights Act, we didn't have any of that. And so they were, it was really created as a means to try to create fairness in hiring in the public sector and now we have all of these other laws and procedures, you know, there isn't, I don't think, any other, uh, job in the public sector that is more, uh, regulated than police and hiring police officers as far as what we have to do in terms of hiring, uh, a police officer, in terms of what the requirements are and such. And so I am. And so, I am completely in support of this. I think it's time to get rid of the buggy whip. And I'm glad that we're doing it because that is exactly what's happening out there, is that it's a very competitive market in law enforcement. And if you have a process that is really an impediment to getting good candidates, you know, there are many departments out there looking for police officers, and everyone wants the best one. And if it's a competitive market, then we can't wait an additional four to eight weeks and not tell someone where they are in our hiring process. And so, I think it's a great idea. It's time. We need to get rid of the buggy whip. So, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think, as you come on to the council as a new member, you learn a lot really fast. And I remember sitting down with former Chief Schnell, and he was going through the hiring process at that time, and there was this big binder on his desk, and I said, "Wow, that's a big binder for all those applications." And he said, "No, this is one application." And so, I mean, just the amount of work and paperwork and research and due diligence that goes into hiring one police officer is a tremendous amount of work. And I think that was something I learned pretty quickly. So, I think anything we can do to make that process quicker, easier, and more efficient, I'm supportive of. I also want to thank Councilmember Juneman because I know how passionate she's been about this issue. And I know she just said she couldn't believe eight years ago that she'd be supporting this. Frankly, I couldn't have believed eight weeks ago that she'd be supporting this. But I think really shows an open mind and willingness to look at this in light of the current situation. So, I really appreciate that, and, because it is something we're going to have to work together on if we're going to do, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Jeong.
Thank you, Mayor. For, and I think for this one, like, thank you for reiterating how important it is, all five votes has to go into this. And this one, we're relying a lot on, you know, our police commissioners who have volunteered their time to work with us, Chief Schnell and Kathy Juneman, on their input on this and how it impacts our hiring process. And, you know, it's, hiring a police officer is very important for any city, and especially important for our city and our commitment to our police force and our community. And so, I'd be, would be in favor of this.
Thank you. Chief Nadeau, any words of wisdom? Up Director Nadeau as well.
Mayor and council, I'll let you judge whether or not they're words of wisdom, but I was kind of reflecting back on civil service and why it was important, and political patronage, and what must have been going on in the fifties and the sixties with new mayors or councils that would come in and, you know, this was so necessary. And, you know, and today, and it's been reiterated time and again with statutory requirements and professional HR departments, and even the background investigations that Councilmember Smith referenced, that, you know, are, you know, a dossier where we talk to neighbors, we talk to high school teachers, we talk to college teachers, we talk to, you know, spouses or significant others, we talk to ex-spouses, right? We really want that in-depth view of who this person is. And so, yeah, I do think that this is the right move. I will say that our three commissioners and those who have served before have done so admirably. They've been incredibly cooperative. They could not have been just more open to, you know, meeting when we needed to meet. This last process probably helped to seal it for me because we had a person who was in our process. She was also being backgrounded by Maple Grove, and she was also at the chief's interview level with, I think it was Eden Prairie. And I think we gave her the longest conditional offer ever. If the civil service meets and approves you, and we can get you through the background, and, I mean, it was just one of those things that showed that our process had to be more competitive. And luckily, we were able to grab onto that candidate, and she's not one of our officers. But I certainly appreciate the council's discussion and diligence in looking into this.
Thank you. So, last, I just wanted to again thank Councilmember Juneman. I also want to say to the public, whether you're here in the audience or you're at home, and you have any questions about any of this, why the council made that decision, please call anybody on the council, any of the staff related to any of these issues tonight, and we will talk to you about that and offer our opinions and talk through that. We may not always agree in C I to I, but we're more than willing to talk about that. We're very accessible. Also, just to reiterate, and the council is governed by open meeting laws, we do not talk to each other about issues that we will be voting on. And so, I think everybody's positive, so I think, I think we're going to get the vote here, but it's important that the public understands that it's not the legislature where we all go into a caucus and we say, "Hey, let's all vote like this." But we are very independent. We feel really lucky we have a council that does its homework. You can see we also have a passionate council. With that, is there a motion?
With respect to and thanks to our seating, excuse me, seated commissioners, I move to approve the ordinance repealing the Police Civil Service Commission. That would be Chapter Two, Article Four, Division Three of the City Code regarding the Police Civil Service Commission.
It's been moved by Juneman and seconded by Abrams, a motion to approve the ordinance repealing the Police Civil Service Commission. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Juneman.
Again, I want to thank the three seated commissioners because I know this must have been a little bit difficult, but they too could see that it needed to change. So, we appreciate their service, and we also appreciate their willingness to give this consideration and give us their, shall we say, okay.
Well said, and I think we all agree with you. With that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing five, oh, the motion passes. And with that, anything else, members? It's eight thirty-three, almost a nineteen-minute meeting. What was the record, Councilmember Smith?
Twelve.
Twelve minutes. A little bit longer than that, but have a good night. And again, if you need any more information, give us a call or email us. Thank you. Thank you for grabbing what you want.